Not yet.
Okay.
We are recording.
Thank you. All right. Well, good evening to everyone. And for the record, we have a nice full house tonight. Very exciting. This is a Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, February 20th, 2023. And the time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the agenda by trustee Rodden and second by trustee Schneider. Any further comment or questions from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six zero. Let's stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We are on item number five. Item number five is presentations. Item 5A, swearing in a fire lieutenant, Scott Lee Joyce. Chief Burtler.
Thank you, President Vin Rossum.
Put on a suit. Might as well come up front.
Yeah, that's what I did. Make sure I don't talk too much. Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight for this special event. We were welcoming in our new full-time lieutenant as he has sworn in and his badge pinned. Lieutenant Lee Joyce, on behalf of the residents of the village of Swamaco, I welcome you to your new position and I thank you for your service and sacrifices you are about to make. The fire service is a proud profession, especially that of giving back to the community. You are answering that call. At this time, I would like to, for Judge Rathburn, to please come forward and swear in Lieutenant Lee Joyce.
Thank you. Right there, it's good. Lieutenant, would you raise your right hand for me, please? Please repeat after me. I,
Aye.
Scott Lee Joyce.
Scott Lee Joyce.
Having been appointed as lieutenant for the village of Swamaco Fire Department.
Having been appointed by the village of Swamaco as lieutenant.
Okay. In said county.
In said county.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution is, Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
All right, congratulations.
Oh, you're billing him for that, too?
All right, thank you, Judge Rathburn. Firefighter's rich history is reflected in the firefighter badge. The badge is recognized to the public as readiness to serve at moments' notice. The tools, tools on the badge reflect the tools a firefighter will need to perform his duty. We asked our new lieutenant to choose someone who has been significant or played a significant role in their life to pin their badge. Lieutenant Lee Joyce has chosen his son Ryan to pin his badge. Once the badge is pinned, Lieutenant Lee Joyce will receive his helmet from the, and shield from Assistant Cre- Chief Chris Kibergsek. The helmet is a symbolization of protection, protecting the public and the training we will provide to protect you and your family. At this time, will Ryan please come forward to pin his father?
Good opportunity to make him bleed. Remember all those times when he said you had to be home early?
Today.
No pressure.
Thank you. Lieutenant Lee Joyce, on behalf of the residents of the village of Swamaco, I welcome you to your new position and I thank you for the service and fact sacrifices you are about to make. Congratulations again. All right, at this time, we will now meet over in the conference room for cake and refreshments for anyone who'd like to join.
At this time, I would look for a five-minute.
Wow.
A motion for a five-minute recess.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion for a five-minute recess. Motion by trustee Ward, second by trustee Rodden. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Recession.
Recession. Not adjourned, recession.
Michelle, do all mute?
What's that? It was a short five minutes. Good. Are we ready?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to return to session.
Okay.
So we have a motion to return to open session and we have a second by trustee Rodden. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. We are back in session. At this time, we are with presentations, item number five. 5B, welcome new Department of Public Works employee, Cody Domke, Director Smits.
Thank you. Well, I don't have anything cool like that. I didn't know we could pin things on our new employees and swear them into stuff, but.
Like a golden shot.
I'll work on that from there.
Okay.
All right, at the end of January, we had a longtime Public Works employee retire from the department. We have since selected a new individual to fill the vacant position. We interviewed a very, a few very qualified candidates and believe our selection for the team will strengthen our services to the community. I would like to introduce Cody Domke to the village board, the community, and to our team. Cody shares our similar interests in providing top-quality service and opportunity to the community we reside in. Cody brings five years of relatable experience from his previous employment at the Austin Strabell Airport. I am excited to see what Cody can bring to our department and hope for a successful career here with the village. Please welcome Cody Domke to the Department of Public Works and feel free to ask him any questions you may have. Cody, please stand up.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks for joining. We'll try not to cause you as much excitement as you might have had at the airport. As much excitement as you might have had at the airport.
Do you get like frequent flyer miles that you can transfer over or?
Oh, no.
None of that, huh?
Cody, do you live in the, do you live in Swamaco or are you? Oh, excellent. Very good. Well, thanks very much.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
You're welcome to join them for a cake and some cookies.
And you don't have to stick around for the majority of the meeting, even though you're an employee and a resident. All right. Moving on to item number six, public appearances. At this time, anyone in the public may come forward to address the village on items that are not scheduled on the agenda. We ask that you provide your name and address and speak clearly into the microphone. Be aware that any issues that you bring forward, they're not on the agenda, so they may be referred back to staff. They may be referred for a future agenda item, but because they're not on the agenda, they're not really open for significant discussion or decision this evening. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on an issue not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing no one, we will move on. Item number seven, consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the previous minutes of the village board dated 2/6/2023, January 2023 Fire Department Report, January 2023 Municipal Court Report, and the January 2023 Recreation Report. Are there any questions or comments with regard to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion from trustee Eckert to approve this evening's consent agenda and a second from trustee Rodden. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Item number eight, administrative items. Item 8A, appointment of the village treasurer, Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So as you all know, our previous finance director departed at the end of January and after posting that position. We've come to an agreement with Kay Magyar to fill that role. So I want to formally welcome back Kay Magyar to the village of Swamaco. And for those watching on Facebook or here in the audience that don't know Kay, I'll give a brief background. She has over 15 years of finance director experience between Shawnock Utilities, the village of Mount Pleasant, and served in this capacity for the village of Swamaco from 2004 to 2016. She has an associate's degree in business administration, a bachelor's degree in managerial accounting, and is a certified public accountant. She's been able to hit the ground running and is getting up to speed on all of our projects. And so our code does state that this position shall be appointed. So the motion I'm looking for tonight is to appoint Kay Magyar as the village's treasurer. Any questions?
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
And I would be glad to.
I'll make a motion.
No, you go ahead.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kay Magyar as the village of Swamaco treasurer.
Second.
So we have a welcome and a motion to appoint Kay Magyar as the village of Swamaco treasurer by trustee Andrews. And we have a second from trustee Rodden. Is there any further comment or discussion from the board? Hearing none? Is this a, no. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Welcome.
Thank you.
Again.
It's like being back home.
No, I have to stay to the end of the meeting.
Everybody gets cake tonight. Okay, item 8C, resolution, sorry, item 8B, Resolution 23004, modifying fee schedule to include a cemetery transfer fee. Administrator Kaker, if you would.
Thank you. So Resolution 23004 is a follow-up to our previous discussion. Approving this resolution would amend our fee schedule to include a cemetery plot transfer fee of $200 if they are a resident and $400 if it's being transferred to a non-resident. Is there any questions?
On the resolution, the written resolution itself, it says village services permits and property use for 2021.
Yeah, we'll, we'll edit that to 2023.
Okay. Otherwise, I think the changes we made were good.
Hearing no other objection, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 23004.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by trustee Ward to approve Resolution 23004, a resolution revising the fee schedule for the village services permits and property use for 2023. And we have a second by trustee Schneider. Is there any further discussion or comment? A roll call, please.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Romez is not here. Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Vin Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously six to zero.
Very good. Okay. Item 8B, Resolution 23005, release of utility easement. Administrator Kaker.
Thank you. So within the urban edge development, just to give you some context, this building over here is the old Shaco Building. To the south would be where Festival is. In that parking lot, there is an, an old 12-foot-wide utility easement, as shown as this blue hash. And the current developer is requesting that the village vacate that utility easement. Is someone who's trying to potentially add another building there. They want to make sure that there aren't any easements there that would hinder their desired use of it, in this case, parking. So talking with staff, there's no need for us to have that utility easement. There are no utilities under there that we are aware of. And so we had our attorney draft a release for that. And the Resolution 23005 would be to approve that resolution. Any questions on that one?
If there's nothing, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 23005, Resolution to terminate and release of utility easement.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 23005, releasing the utility easement by trustee Schneider. We have a second by trustee Rodden. Any further discussion or comment from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along. Item. Item number, we are on actually number nine. Public Works, item 9A, East Deerfield Sewer Project bids. Director Smits.
Thank you. Village staff prepared plans and specs to bid out the East Deerfield Sanitary Sewer Extension project located within TID Number 1. Sealed bids were opened February 6, 2023, at 1:00 PM here at the municipal service center. There were four bidders for this project and very competitive numbers were received. I have attached the bid tab for your review. The village had planned to borrow through TID Number 1 for year 2023, about $1.3 million for this East Deerfield Sewer Extension. The funding source is to be determined following a consultation with Ellers coming up. One possible addition to the project is we looked at the money that we had planned for and where bids came in at. So we would be able to possibly include 400 additional feet of sanitary sewer extending north from the existing northerly project limit, which is right now at Deerfield Court. So with the funds that we have available, we would be able to go about 400 more feet north of that and service one additional parcel. The TID, again, would be able to financially support that project addition. It would be, it was originally removed from the project scope because we just didn't think we could afford it with where estimates and numbers came in last year. So we cut that piece out and bid it out just to Deerfield Court, but we had a couple of good bids that came in. So here's a potential that we could extend it four more feet north. The overall project construction came in a little bit over $1 million for the original scope between our lift station down by the Woodfield Motor Court condos up to Deerfield Court. The construction with the 400-feet addition would come to $1,088,391.60. We would plan for a 15% contingency at $73,353.1. And we would expect our engineering costs to come in just under $33,000. So if we were to add the 400 feet to the project, our total probable cost for this project would be So I left it as two motions tonight to either approve the project up to Deerfield Court. We just have a little bit of remaining funds left in that TID or we could add that 400 feet if the property owner to the north of Deerfield Court does agree that they would like to connect at this time. And we did consult with them probably five years ago and they were in support of it a few years ago. We just haven't heard back yet recently from them to know, to know for sure if, if that's still in the interest of theirs. Any questions?
Well, I talked to Kay earlier today and, and the TID will support it.
Yep.
So.
It's a valuable use of funds.
Last, last fall, we had reached out to Ellers to do an analysis in terms of how much we could afford within the, the TID. And Ellers came back at 1.3 million before financing costs, so that was kind of our number. And that 1.3 million was our estimate to Deerfield Court. So for it to come about $300,000 short of that was good to see and gives us a little more flexibility in this, this project. So we're, we're confident that the TID can support this cost. And it was always in the project plan for sewer to be extended this far.
So all of those private businesses that are just north of the, the station, are all those set up to be connected?
Well, they all have private holding tanks currently, but most of them had constructed their buildings so that their tanks were out front, knowing that at some point down the road that we'd have sewer available. You know, a handful of them have been waiting for it over the years. Some, you know, maybe just put money into their current systems, but, you know, Alex set up meetings and we've met with them all so far. And so far, we haven't had any negative feelings from any one of them. So everybody's pretty much ready for it and on board.
And you've met with all of them? You've met with all of them?
All existing building owners, I think.
Yeah, we sent a letter last August making them aware that this project was a potential. And we talked to a couple of them at that time. And then since it's, the bids have come in, we sat down with Andy Van Der Lu, Michael Brandt, forgetting the guy.
B&amp;B.
Yeah, so Bud's Butter purchased that.
The one we haven't yet was GAD. We haven't heard back from GAD yet.
So I went to, to GAD's facility, or GFL's facility, and I got a business card for a guy that I sent an email to, sending it up the chain to see if they would be interested in hooking. But we have made contact with those business owners.
Okay.
Yeah, GAD a few years ago wasn't part of it when we originally talked about this. I think when Steve Kay was still here, I reached out to them all and GAD was in full support then. So I wouldn't, it would anticipate it's similar.
Well, it's completely different owners.
Right.
Yeah. It's still value to, value to the property. I mean, everybody's got a tank to maintain and they don't last forever. They got a pumping, you know, whatever monthly pumping cost to it. A lot of them, their tanks are out front, so it's really not that much work to connect.
And it's rare for these businesses to be able to have a sewer line go through at no cost. Typically, they're specially assessed.
Yeah.
So this is, even though they're going to have to pay for the lateral connection, just having that main place in front of their property is a huge win for them. It's going to increase the value of their properties immensely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, when we had talked about that, we thought the average increase to a property was like around $20,000.
Something like that. That was from Joe Deener, our assessor. So Andy, just to clarify, if they wanted to do that, that extension, that'd be option two, correct?
Yep. So option two would be to add the additional 400 feet. We already received pricing from Dorner to add that, so it's a pretty fixed cost.
And if GFL were to come back tomorrow and say, we absolutely don't want it, we could have Dorner remove that from the scope, correct?
Yes.
But I don't think, I don't think, would we give that option? Because future, future development of that property, they may want it. So.
Yeah, if the funds are there, we can always install the sewer and work out something for connection after.
Right.
Are there other questions?
I'll offer a motion to approve awarding the project to Dorner Inc. For a price of $1,888,391.60 plus a contingency allowance of $73,353.1 plus our engineering costs of $32,700 for total project cost of $1,194,444.61 using funds borrowed from TID 1.
Thank you. We have a motion from trustee Rodden to approve the expenditure to Dorner Incorporated. As stated, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from trustee Schneider. Any further comments? Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please.
I'll do a roll call.
It is a roll call. Thank you.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Vin Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously six to zero.
Thank you. All right. Public Works Items B, well number five, test well bid approval. Director Smits.
Thank you. Last meeting, the test well project approval was tabled to obtain additional information on what may be driving the cost higher than expected. I reached out to a few well drillers in the state and what I've learned is the overall amount of qualified drillers in the state is down about 40% from where it was five years ago. There are simply less contractors out there to perform the work. Most available drillers are extremely busy with completing residential wells where they don't, where they're not even bothering bidding on, you know, these high-capacity municipal wells. They shy away from these projects because of the strict specifications, the oversight and the reporting that are required when it comes to a municipal or a high-cap well. It's easier for them to go make money on all the houses that are going in. In August of 2022, Onida bid out a test well and CTW was awarded the project, again, being the only bidder. So very similar to where we are with this project.
What, what, did you have the, what they had to pay for it or what they?
I did not get pricing on that, no. I can't, I mean, I'm sure I could look back on class, but I didn't ask. Working with CTW, I think the village can perform the erosion control for the site during the test pumping. And there was a couple of trees to be removed from the site. That was a $22,000 line item for that. If we take on that, and it, it didn't seem too intensive, something that we can handle, that would shave $22,000 off that project. I discussed other areas that could also be modified to reduce the cost by retaining the scope of the project. Troy recommended, so Troy is with CTW, he recommended a few areas to adjust that we could provide the same result, but reduce the cost. The items adjusted will not reduce the expected outcome and can only be done because this is a test well rather than a permanent well. So there'll be some other, you know, outlying things that when it comes to the permanent well that we can't, you know, shave off or, or say we're going to dial it back a little bit. You know, when Ayers spec out this municipal well, they've pretty much duplicated a permanent well. And being that this is a test well, you can eliminate some of the additions that, you know, these drillers get away with when they're just doing residential wells. It's going to be capped following this. It's not going to stay there, I know that. So it doesn't pay to build it to municipal standard. I've attached in a modified bid summary with the recommendations given. Unit pricing was adjusted based on conversations with Troy. For this project now, the village would be looking at a total project cost from CTW at $147,208, using impact fees to support the project. Plus I would add a 10% contingency for $14,720.80. I did attach the modified bid summary that Troy provided me here last week. You'll see the noticeable difference is that we'll take on the erosion control and also instead of drilling a 10-inch well, they're going to use a 9-inch bit versus a 10-inch bit. And that significantly reduces the cost and the amount of labor it takes to drill that well. Again, only because it's a test well, not a permanent well, that they're, we're able to do this. So with that, you know, you have less grow, which you'll see is a reduced cost. But with that, we worked the price down to $147,000.
So you're saving us $50,000?
I'm not.
Well, hold on a sec, because I just thought of this, too. So because we're using park impact fees for the erosion control portion of it, we almost need a motion to include that because the PSC is going to want an audit of where the park, or the, the water impact fees went. And if the motion is just for the 147, you won't be able to use that $22,000.
You can't put it in the same one?
For ourself. So if there is a motion to approve this tonight, you're going to also need to include $22,000 for erosion control measures so that when we're audited, we can show the auditors that we were approved to use our water impact fees for that.
You can't put it in the same motion?
We can, yeah.
I just added, I got it all there.
So is that?
So is that $22,000 then part of the 147, or in addition to?
It'd be in addition, correct?
And is it really 22,000? What do you want?
I didn't figure it out what to the dollar would I want. I don't know. I'd say for us to do it, plus materially, probably like 5,000.
Well, there's no reason to undercut it, so if it's estimated at 22, do that, and we just won't send it.
Don't use it all, yeah.
We'll use what we need to use, but it was...
Not to exceed.
And this $22,000 comes from?
Water impact fees.
But it will be our staff.
Yep.
All right. I think I got the motion.
Go for it.
Anybody have questions? No?
I make a motion to approve the test well project to CTW Corporation for $147,208, using impact fees to support the project. In addition, there'll be a 10% contingency of $14,720 applied to this project, and also $22,000 for erosion control, or not to exceed $22,000 for erosion control efforts done by the village.
You did capture that all.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor from trustee Rodden to approve the well number five, test well, that we have in front of us. And we have a second from trustee Schneider. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Vin Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously six to zero.
Thank you. Okay. Item number 10, planning and zoning items. Item 10A, ordinance two zero two three dash zero one, amendment to the comprehensive plan zoning. Administrator Dunks.
Thank you. We are looking at about a 20-acre parcel. The land currently is shown as agriculture in that future land use plan. This was changed during the last full plan amendment in 2015. It was a requirement for them to remain in the ag farmland preservation. All lands are required to show as remaining in agricultural use on our map. The earlier land use maps did show this as a single-family residential. The original property owner has sold the property, and the purchaser... It was purchased for the intent of residential use. Because the land is currently zoned ag farmland preservation, we must first comply with the comprehensive plan as a condition of any rezone. Planning Commission did recommend, or did approve, a resolution by a seven-zero vote. Thank you.
So normally, these all come together. You know, we get this, and then we also get whoever's designing it. Why don't we have that together? Are they just not ready to come forward, or what?
This is only changing the comprehensive plan. This is not a rezone.
Okay, just changing the cover into plan.
You will.
The rezone will come.
Planning Commission will be looking at the rezone and preliminary plat approval at the March 7th, 8th, whatever meeting that is.
If there's nothing, I'll offer a motion to approve ordinance two zero two three dash zero one, a resolution adopting the modifications to the future land use map of the 2015 comprehensive plan.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution by trustee Schneider, and we have a second by trustee Ward. Is there any other questions or comments? Okay. If there are none, then this would also be a roll call vote.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Vin Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously six zero.
So then just... Is zoning administrator Dunks, just to clarify then, so the next step in this process for the individual who owns this property would, as trustee Rodden mentioned, would be for them to come forward with a rezone, and with that, would we see some sense of what they might be looking at doing?
The rezone and preliminary plat are coming through together.
Thank you.
So simply a rezone doesn't necessarily mean they have to show anything?
Yes, but I was... I just didn't know if there was knowledge of that, so... So when that rezone comes up before the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's going to be a preliminary plat that will give us some sense of what the plan is for the property, and that will come to planning and zoning, and then once it's passed, there's... For those in the audience interested, once that decision is made by Planning and Zoning, it would come forward as a recommendation to this board? Yes. Okay. All right.
Yeah, and I don't think my 11 years on the board, I don't think we've ever seen one that hasn't come together, so that's what...
Doesn't have to work that way, but typically it does.
Okay. Very good. Item 10B, public hearing, ordinance two zero two three to repeal and replace chapter 19, the floodplain ordinance, adopting the 2022 state model. Zoning administrator Dunks.
Thank you. FEMA did notify Swamaco a few months ago that they had approved the new floodplain maps for the Bay of Green Bay. With the new maps also comes the state requirement to adopt most current state floodplain model ordinance. The changes to the ordinance are highlighted for you. The full ordinance was emailed to you guys a few weeks ago. The packet did contain an updated version of that. There were just a few minor modification based on the DNR's review of our ordinance. Some of it had to... Was dealing with how the Hidden Lake Dam was outlined in the ordinance. They wanted it detailed more specifically. The other was how our maps were detailed. They wanted them to split out between the various years. And the third part was something that they had missed in their original model ordinance, and it was just a minor detail there, too, so I don't know how much of this you want to go through, or if you've read it at all, or...
There's not... It's nothing extreme.
It's nothing extreme.
We've kind of been through it. Well, I guess I was.
The biggest thing is we're adopting coastal zoning requirements into our ordinance. There's not a single property that I'm aware of that is affected by it, but because we have it on our map, we have to include it in our ordinance, but it really... Little tail might be the only thing that affects, and it's already not buildable, so it means nothing to our overall enforcement end of it.
Steve, for the packed house here and then the three people on Facebook, can you explain a little bit the value of having a floodplain ordinance? What's the benefit for the village having it? Because you don't have to have one.
No, we're not required to have a floodplain ordinance. We're not required to adopt the state model ordinance. If you choose to not, we will be kicked out of the National Flood Insurance Program, and the 49 or 53 policyholders that you have will be in a little bit of hot water because their mortgage will likely also be tied to inclusion of that flood insurance, and they either go to Lloyds of London for insurance, which would be extremely expensive, or they have to pay off their mortgage, so...
So I just wanted to make sure that we're all aware of the importance of having a floodplain ordinance. Yes, it adds some more rules, but it provides them the value of getting flood insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program versus going out and getting private flood insurance.
I will make a motion to open up for public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second to open up for public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. If there's anyone who'd like to come forward and speak on this, now is your opportunity. Please come forward.
I will make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close public hearing, and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Public hearing is closed.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2023 dash zero two, an ordinance to appeal and replace chapter 19 floodplain ordinance, adopting the 2022 state model ordinance.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor by trustee Rodden to approve ordinance. We have a second by trustee Schneider to approve ordinance two zero two three dash zero two. This is also a roll call vote.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Vin Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously six zero.
Terrific. Moving on to item 11, discussion on future agenda items. Anyone?
Just real quick, Mr. Dunks, if that does pass, that particular plot, when would that be? Before the village board? Do you have an idea? I know one individual in the audience that will want to know that.
Probably the first meeting in April because we can't make the 20th of March because of publication. The rezone would have to be published. I don't think we can make publication from that Planning Commission.
Actually, it'd be great if it was the first of April.
Yeah.
Or the first meeting in April.
We typically won't publish until after Planning Commission makes their recommendation, and it would have to be published the Friday after that meeting, which we have to have to them Wednesday morning. The meeting doesn't happen until Wednesday night, so we don't like to publish ahead of time, because then we're out if it doesn't move forward, so...
Sounds good.
Anyone else with a future agenda item?
I hesitate.
Don't.
You hesitate so long?
Well, I've done it before, and it usually comes around and kicks me, but do we want to look into a monthly billing option for sewer and water, or don't we? Is that something to look into?
I think we need to...